I will call the meeting to an order. Can we please start with a roll call vote? Not, I mean, simple roll call.
Absolutely. President Abbas.
President.
Alder Carter.
Present.
Alder Heck.
Here.
Alder Lamer.
Here.
Alder Wehelier.
Here.
And then Alders Martin and Harrington McKinney are running late and Alder Bennett is excused, but we have quorum.
Thank you. Paul, can you please give us a ID announcement and instructions, please?
Sure. Welcome to our virtual meeting. If you lose connection at any point during the meeting, you can reconnect by clicking the link or calling the number in your original email. Members and city staff members, please activate your video and keep it on for the duration of the meeting. Staff, please activate your video when you're speaking. Please use the raise hand feature when you'd like to be recognized to speak, ask questions, or request a roll call vote. Lowering your hand will take you out of the queue. Members of the public who have registered to speak, the name you entered in Zoom must match the name you entered in registration. You will remain muted until called upon. The clerk will tell you when your time is up. After speaking, a member of the body may ask you a question. If you need to share documentation with the committee, please send it to the email listed on today's agenda. Chair, the floor is yours.
Thank you very much. Next, we will move forward to, can I have a motion for approval of the minute?
So moved?
Moved. Alder Lamer, hand is raised, seconded. Any question concerns regarding the minutes? I do not see any hand raised, so I will consider as unanimous approval. Next is a public item. We have a one which is Trent Rachel Dertengin, Derturting from District 18, wish to speak in support. Paul, do we have a Rachel with us?
We do not.
Okay, Rachel is not here, so we will move forward to disclosures and recusal. This is an opportunity for member of the body to disclose or accuse at this moment. Please raise your hand if you want to disclose or accuse. I do not see any hand raised. With that, we go to the new business. Agenda item number two, legislative file number six nine nine one three, approving a cost-sharing agreement with King County for historical investigation of PFAS use at the airport. Can I have a motion first, please? Motion to adopt from Alder Carter is their second. Second by Alder Lamer. Questions for the staff? I have question for the staff. I see Bren, you're here. Thank you for being here. I know you were on vacation, so I appreciate that. Could you please give us a background, a little bit history, why this is moving now forward as council proposed some money about testing back in 2019? A 2020, I believe, for $50,000 would be great for the body to get some historical idea and also the purpose of this agreement.
So, as you just stated, the council approved $50,000 to spend on PFAS testing a couple of years ago. The, the problem with the city being involved with the PFAS investigation at the airport, or the challenge is that we don't control the property. It's not our land. And so, in addition to that, as I believe you are privy to, there is still an ongoing negotiation between, um, there's a dog I hear. Is anyone else hear that?
Yes, it's mine, sorry.
There's an ongoing negotiation between the city and the county on how to proceed with cost sharing for the ongoing greater PFAS investigation and remediation at the airport. With that said, and we still haven't reached an agreement between the city and the county on how, if there will be an agreed-upon percentage of how much the city would share. We wanted to move forward with doing something with this $50,000 that had been allocated. And so, the money is going to be used on a historical investigation. And the purpose of the historical investigation is to identify previous users of PFAS, so anyone else who may have trained with PFAS containing A triple F firefighting foam at the airport. If there are any other additional sources of PFAS at the airport. So, for example, maybe there are some other areas where they had done training that we weren't familiar with, or where there had been a crash, or where foam had been dumped, something like that, that would come out in this investigation. And then of particular interest to the city and perhaps less so to the county is figuring out when did foam start being used at the airport? So that we can determine the city's potential liability. So those are the three main things that we're trying to accomplish with this historical study.
So, if I'm understanding right, so this money won't be used for any remediation, this is just for testing with the partnership with the county, correct?
That is correct. And I, I imagine there's some frustration about that. The county has been extremely, I mean, they have basically said they will not accept any money from the city until we agree to a certain percentage of responsibility going forward, and this is going to be a potentially extremely expensive remediation.
So, yes, I have a couple of more questions, but go ahead, Deputy Mayor. You're muted.
Sorry, I just wanted to add a clarification. This is not the entirety of the money that's been allocated for this project, so I don't, it's not that we're spending on a historical investigation instead of remediation. That the other work, the investigation, the site, the testing, the mitigation, that work is all continuing. It's not hinted on any of these agreements. This is just one piece of what the original scope was intended to cover. Those other pieces went first, and now we're backing up and looking into the historical investigation as well. So it's not instead of, it's one piece of.
So Christie, the follow-up question is about the amount of money allocated, $30,000 approximately. So, so moving on, if there is additional funds needed, would that will be, come to the council again? And how, what is the plan for keeping the council ready up to date on the next steps?
I think, so originally, the council had approved $50,000, and we will pay a third of this cost, which we estimate to be a third of $30,000. And, and so I think always, when new budget allocations needed or new contracts are authorized, that always comes to the council. So, so yes, I would imagine that that would continue in that way. I don't know why it wouldn't.
Okay. Alder McKinney, go ahead.
You, President. My question is to staff. I am slow on the uptake, so please explain to me when you say historical research and historical, is there no place that this information already exists? Are we creating, you know, I, I hear the amount, I hear the reasoning, but I'm not really sure. I'm not able to connect if this money is being well-spent on something that's already there. Could you just expand on that, just to help me to understand that process and reasoning?
There is not a central place that has all this information. And so this is pretty standard for environmental remediation sites, that it's extremely helpful to go back and try to piece together a history of what happened at the property to make sure that you're really seeing the whole picture. And in this case, it'll likely result, potentially even in affidavits, of interviewing people who may have worked in maintenance on the facility, who did firefighting training. I'm sure we'll be interviewing previous City of Madison firefighters to try to put together a picture of what potentially happened there. It'll also include looking at potentially federal records to understand how the FAA regulations for using this foam may have impacted or influenced when foam was used on the airport. You know, so unfortunately, there's no quick and easy way to go and just find this information. Does that give you a picture of what we'll be doing?
I'm on mute. Thank you very much for your response. I, I guess I'm, I'm not sure, but I still am in query, is that there is no, because we've been dealing with this issue for, for a period of time. And historically, there is no, no depository that we can go get historical information. Is, is questioning for me. So thank you for your response. I don't have a way to go forward, but I just, thank you for the information.
Thank you, Alder McKinney. Bren, I have just one follow-up question for the understanding of those who are listening to this meeting. Why this is taking so long?
That might be a question for Christie. I mean, with, with regards to the actual remediation, the work is starting to proceed actively related to what the Air National Guard, the funding that they have gotten. And so that is extremely positive news for the PFAS investigation there. Yeah, Christie, I mean, do you want to, I don't, I'm not part of the day-to-day conversations with the, with the county. So is there anything that you want to add, Christie, to that?
I mean, I think, I can't say anything different than I think the county would say, which is, these things take time and they're actively working on it. There's a number of things moving forward related to, I know they're working on a system to keep the PFAS contaminated water on-site through doing things with their sewer lines, storm sewer lines, and they're actively experimenting with some microbes that can essentially eat PFAS in soil. Sometimes those results take time to come in, they take time to learn from them. You, you, you do before and after testing, you wait for weather, you're trying to test a creek and it's too dry or it's too wet. And like, you know, I can't say this is my field. You're talking to somebody who's not a scientist. But I would say there's work going on. I know we all want it to be fast, but you know, the, the county could probably speak more to the day, to day-to-day on the timeline since, since they're in driver's seat on it.
Sure. Christie, just one follow-up question, then I will go to Alder Foster. You mentioned, and I'm also aware they're keeping some of that outside and using various techniques. If city is monitoring our Starkweather Creek to make sure the contamination is not getting into our lakes and through the city, and city does have that $50,000. I'm curious if we, as a city, actively monitor our part of the, you know, Starkweather Creek, our part of the land which is in city.
Yeah, Bren.
Well, we, we do actually have pretty good, what we'd consider baseline data for the creek. The county prior to their next phase of remediation work, which is going to be lining, if you imagine the airport, it's underling, it's underlined by this massive stormwater system, which is permeable to groundwater. It almost functions like a farm drain tile, lowering the water table at the airport. So constantly contaminated groundwater is funneling into the stormwater system, and then it's just got like a fast conduit, a highway to Starkweather Creek. And so, one of the county's first tasks for remediation that they're going to do is going through and repairing that system, lining it, taking out sections, putting in other, you know, pipes that are not permeable to groundwater, and that could have a dramatic impact on Starkweather Creek. Prior to doing that work, they did take three rounds of collecting water from Starkweather Creek at a couple of different locations, and the data is pretty consistent. So we're not sampling it actively on a regular basis, but right now, I wouldn't expect the numbers to change dramatically until after they've done this next phase of work. And then they're required to go back out and do three more rounds of sampling to find out, did it make a difference, which, you know, we just don't know.
So, so Bren, those three rounds of sampling, the data, the county never shared that to a public. At least, I'm not aware of that, that I haven't seen it. Did they share with the City of Madison, with you guys?
Yes, we've seen that, and I'm pretty sure that that is available on the DNR BERTS website, the remediation page for this, for this project, and I can send that to, to the CCEC.
That will be very helpful, and just want to clarify, we as a city is not doing actively testing. Regardless, we have a big rain event or construction at Truax, we're letting the county to lead on this. That's what I'm hearing, correct?
Correct. I mean, right now, you know, if you get a big stormwater event, you're getting a lot of fresh, clean water going in, and so that actually sort of clean, dilutes what's coming into the creek. You're going to get higher levels in the summer when the creek levels are really low, and most of the water going into the creek is from, is from groundwater.
Okay.
You know, so DNR has also done two, two full rounds of sampling in Lake Monona, and so we also have fairly consistent data from the lakes to know what levels are in the lakes.
Thank you. Please share the data with CCEC, and sorry, Alder Foster, I said I will ask one question, I end up asking many, so.
No worries. Um, yeah, I was just going to offer up, partly in response to Alder Harrington McKinney's question. We, I think it's at the next CCEC, the next one, or maybe the last one in March. We'll be sharing our kind of recommendations from the Environmental Justice Work Group, which includes recommendations around sort of communication plan related to PFAS. One of the, one of the core elements of that is a consolidated webpage that, that would have information on kind of multiple aspects of PFAS, both drinking water, contaminated surface waters, and sort of this, this third piece, I think, is one, one that's been most challenging because it isn't sort of strictly within the city's kind of wheelhouse or accountability, and that seems like the one area where we have some of the poorest information on, or, or the public has, you know, most questions around. So, well, part of our recommendations is to have that kind of, you know, one-stop shop for PFAS-related information, including information on activities that aren't, that aren't things that the City of Madison can completely control, but that impact residents in the city, including cleanup out at the airport. So I just wanted to offer that, Alder Harrington McKinney, I don't know if that exactly addresses what you were asking for, but it's, it's a noted gap, and we should be getting some recommendations to try and improve that hopefully soon.
Thank you very much, Bren, for coming and explaining the resolution. Appreciate that. Thank you, Deputy Mayor Christie. Okay, if there's no further question, we will move forward. Next, no, we have motion, and there was a second, and no further question, and if there's no objection, I will consider it as unanimous approval. I don't see any hand raised. Motion approved unanimously. We'll move to the next agenda item, agenda item number three, legislative file number six nine 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 zero, amending section three, three point one three two. Establish procedure for hiring the common council chief of staff. I, we need a motion. I talked to Alder Foster as a sponsor, and I think it might be best to refer it to the May meeting because the process is going pretty well, and probably we might learn something new. And once the process is over, we might be able to make some changes, some amendments to it. So if we could have a motion to refer to May, first May meeting, whatever that meeting, uh, common council is. Alder Carter.
I'll talk really fast. I move to refer.
May the second. Second by Alder Lamer. Open for discussion. Okay. Well, if there's no objection, I will consider it as a unanimous vote. I don't see any hand raised. Motion approved. We will move forward to agenda item number four, legislative file number seven zero zero five five, amending section three, three point one three two. Madison General Audit turns to specifying hiring and supervision of common council. Office staff, can I please have motion? Alder Carter.
I move to adopt.
We have a second, second by Alder Wehelier. It's moved and seconded. Any question for the staff or comments? Alder Carter, would you like to speak on your ordinance before I go to Alder?
Yeah, um, yeah, thank you. And, and people are still jogging, et cetera, up the street, so you're going to hear my dog. Yes, really what I was doing was cleaning up this ordinance a little bit. Providing the chief of staff a direct supervisor, which they did not have before. And having the chief of staff being able to hire staff in their office. That doesn't mean that that staff won't be introduced to CCEC and could be introduced at the common council meeting. But the chief of staff should be able to hire civil servants. And anyone that's in that office other than the chief of staff is a civil servant. The chief of staff is under a contract of five years, and that will always be renewed like every other manager, manager at the common council office every five years. So I'm just trying to clean that up and give the chief of staff a direct supervisor, which has not been established. This ordinance was talked about in our work group also. If any questions, I'll be more than happy to answer them.
Thanks, Alder Carter. Alder Foster, and then Alder Lamer.
Thank you, President Abbas. Um, yeah, as, I mean, I, I think I shared with Alder Carter, I'm supportive of the, the idea of clarifying the hiring process for other council staff. I'm wondering if it wouldn't make sense to just refer this along with the other one. I, I did start working on incorporating this actually into the other resolution that was just referred, and I, I think, there's a couple of other things that I think, especially as the, as the chief of staff hiring process goes along, that could be incorporated into an update. So I guess, I guess I'm just suggesting maybe we, we move both of these in the same path, and we can make one change to the ordinance once we've had a chance to get through this current process.
Thank you, Alder Foster. Alder Lamer.
Thank you. I just have a question for clarity. I get the part about the chief of staff having the ability to hire staff that report to them, but I was a little bit confused about the language revision in the first part, part A. So it reads to me like, except for the chief of staff, common council staff shall serve under civil service, shall prepare and review the council office budget, and shall perform those duty, those duties assigned by members of the common council. Is it supposed to read so that all of those only apply to common council staff, or is it supposed to read that just the shall serve under civil service applies to common council staff? Does that make sense?
Can this raise? Alder Carter, you're muted.
I'm just reading it real quickly again.
Attorney, do you want to speak while Alder Carter is reading? Go ahead.
Yes, thank you. I, I think that, this is a little bit on me. I didn't catch this when I was working on it with Alder Carter and neglected to point it out to her. And Alder Foster pointed it out to me last week as well. I think the intent, Alder Carter can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think the intent was just to have that first clause, except for the chief of staff, common council staff shall serve under civil service, period.
Yeah.
And then, we can insert, common council staff shall prepare and review, et cetera.
And just prepare and review the council office budget.
Okay, okay. Perfect. Thank you. All right, that's all I have.
Thanks, Alder Lamer. Next is Alder McKinney.
Thank you, President. Thank you, Alder, for asking for that clarification. And we are in the midst of, of the hiring process and selection process of the chief of staff. And clarifying that first piece of the ordinance saying that subsequent staff will be under civil services is, is very good. I am not in favor of referring this. We are in the midst of deliberations and considerations, and we spend a lot of time, number one, preparing what the duties and responsibilities are. A lot of time even, you know, discussing, you know, those qualifications and that interview process. And so we're at the cusp, cusp of making that decision. Once that decision, that hiring decision and offering is made, then that person who will then be the chief of staff gets the opportunity to go back and look at what his, what his or her staffing considerations are. So I'm not so much in favor of referring this. I'd like to move forward with those noted clarifications that Alder Leonard brought up. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder McKinney. Next is Alder Heck.
Thank you. I, I'm, I'm actually not in favor of moving forward right away, although, right away, although I agree with what other committee members have had to say in, in many ways. I guess actually, I feel like we, we learned so much yesterday, and I think we have more to learn. And, and that it would be wise to, to kind of do it as a package deal and, and make sure to incorporate what's coming. I, I'd like to think we're on the cusp, Alder McKinney, but I, I just feel like we have a little bit further to go. And that anything we can learn and about how to better manage this position and provide this position and the rest of common council staff with the right tools would be good to hold off. So I, I'll not be voting to, to approve this right away. Thanks.
Thank you, Alder Heck. Alder Haley.
Yeah, thanks everyone for their perspective. I, I agree with Alder McKinney. Uh, there are two things here. One is the process of the chief of staff, uh, how we hire, what's the process and all that. And this is the role and the responsibility of the chief of staff. So there are two things that are different, and they don't go uh, hand in hand. Of course, you know, the chief of staff, it would be better if we hire a chief of staff knowing his role and his responsibility rather than waiting uh, for the later date. So I will be in favor of uh, putting this into place or adopting this motion. Thanks.
Thank you, Alder Haley. Alder Carter.
Thank you. Uh, yes, I think that we're looking at this, um, I agree that these are two separate things. I think once we get through the hiring process and how we want to do it, and all of that, which Alder Foster um, uh, presented at our last CCEC meeting to be discussed tonight at common council is way different than the role of the chief of staff. And the role of the chief of staff and who they have to report to needs to be separate from how we hired that person. And so I also urge my colleagues to look at it as two separate things. We are still working on the hiring process, which once we adopt it, um, hopefully will not have to be used for five years. But the chief of staff, who, cross your fingers, will be hired this year, will have to know who they have to, uh, who their direct supervisor is, and their ability to supervise the common council staff. Thank you.
Thanks, Alder Carter. Alder Foster.
Thank you. Yeah, I, I, I think I, I hear the suggestion, and I think there's actually merit to it um, in terms of clarifying that the chief of staff, uh, you know, would do additional hires. Um, I, I guess I wasn't planning on going into too much detail, but it, um, if, if the suggestion is to really debate this at this point, um, one of the things that I, I am not convinced on, and I don't know how critical this was to the proposal, but in um, in two B, there's new language that says shall be, that the um, common council chief of staff shall be appointed by the common council after nomination by the common council executive committee, shall be supervised by the council president, et cetera. And so the statement of shall be supervised by the council president um, is, is, is new. And um, I think it's, it's a bit problematic. Um, we have, the, the, right now, the common council appoints or hires the chief of staff. In the current um, structure, it's the common council executive committee that is responsible for discipline. Um, and so I'm, I'm, I guess I'm, I don't know what this language of supervised by the council president means. If it's not hiring and firing and discipline, um, you know, what is it? It also, the, the chief of staff um, shall perform those duties assigned by members of the common council. So you've got, you know, common council hiring, um, members of the common council can assign duties to them. CCEC is, is in charge of discipline, and then we add a new sentence saying the council president supervises. And I feel like it's, you know, it's, it's been a bit of a confusing ordinance in practice. I think we can all admit in these different areas, and so I, I, I guess I worry this actually adds a bit to that confusion. Um, I, as, as part of reviewing this, again, because I really, I really support, I think, the thrust of, of this amendment around clarifying that the council should not have to appoint other members of the council, which I, you know, I really support. And I was, I was looking for kind of a simple way to incorporate that into the amendment that was just referred. And it, 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 because of the construction of everything, it is more complicated than it would seem on its face. I also went and, and reviewed the um, the ordinances that were re- recently um, passed around the Office of the Independent Monitor, because it's a very, um, it's sort of similar in that the, there's an office, there's a, a head of that office that's hired by a committee, the Civilian Oversight Board, and um, I was actually really impressed by the construction of that, that ordinance. It really clearly lays out um, duties and responsibility, authority of the, the independent monitor. And I, I, I felt like it could actually be a really strong basis for an updated version of, of this ordinance. Um, I think the other thing that I'd like to see is separating out the, the common council executive committee from the office ordinance. So for most of our ordinances, those are, and those are separated, right? The committee is separate from the office. So I guess all that to say is, I, I, I really don't feel comfortable supporting this at this time, even though I support, I think, I think the, the primary element that's in here. So I just wanted to raise that, and I, you know, I, I couldn't vote in support of it at this time with the current wording.
Well, let me just say a couple of things. The issue.
Alder, Alder Heck is next in line, and then I will.
Okay, I was just going to respond to Foster while it was fresh. Go ahead.
Alder Heck.
Thanks, Alder Carter. I'll be quick. Uh, I just wanted to add, I mean, I, I agree with Alder Foster, and, and another uh, kind of confusing element that I think we can all work together and figure out if we just take the time, um, is, is something that he referenced in, in two B one. Uh, it, it mentions that the common council chief of staff shall be appointed by the common council after nomination by a CCEC essentially, and, and then it goes on to say more. Um, I think that yesterday, uh, you know, we, we all uh, kind of soldiered through a very long meeting and, and came to a, a temporary uh, conclusion about how we were going to move forward. And it uh, it appears that in this circumstance, uh, CCEC uh, will not likely be nominating the, the common council chief of staff. And, and we're all kind of in consensus that the process we're going to undertake is where we're going. But if this, if this uh, language were enforced right now, we wouldn't have been able to do what we did yesterday. Uh, we'd be in violation of that because we're, we're effectively uh, moving on to the common council stage at, at this point without having nominated a, a chief of staff. So I just kind of wanted to put that out in that we could, I think we can work together and get the language all figured out in the process, uh, but I, so I hope we can refer. Thanks.
Actually, that would just change the recommendation, which wasn't decided until we had our last CCEC meeting. Not yesterday, but the last CCEC meeting, we said that we would bring forth a recommendation. And we followed through with that yesterday. Am I correct? Alder Abbas, am I correct that at the last, not yesterday, but at the last CCEC meeting, we talked about bringing forth a recommendation to the council?
We talked about bringing a recommendation.
And then yesterday, we implemented that.
Yep, but also, yeah, but yesterday.
So I just want to clear that part up. It wasn't.
Yes, I. I don't want to rebuttal you, but, but yes, you also, I understand your point.
Okay, so, so my thing is, um, just going back to it, and I hope Attorney May is taking some notes. The confusion, going back to Alder Foster, the confusion with our previous chief of staff is that there were seven supervisors. And then there was one person, which was the president, that uh, anything that had to do with um, like a personal matter, anything that was covered under HIPAA, that person talked to just the president. And there was just confusion on that whole thing. And that's why I wanted to, here is your direct supervisor that you can talk to about whatever, and that person can talk to you, and not have to feel obligated to expose yourself to seven, six other people. And I guess that was the biggest confusion. But of course, any of us can give the chief of staff some, uh, I, it says assignment or task or whatever you want to say. They're not um, excluded from that. So that's all I have to say about that. I don't believe it should be combined with the hiring practice, though, and that is what you guys are saying. These are two separate ordinances.
Thank you, Alder McKinney. Alder Heck.
Sorry to speak again. I, I, I'm not necessarily saying we need to combine these into the same ordinance. I just need to think, I just, I'm saying we need to think them through together. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder Heck. Any other comments? Alder Lema.
And I don't see the harm in referring this. It seems like an opportunity for, you know, possibly some more clarity and learning around the process, and maybe an opportunity for some collaboration together. So I don't, I don't have a problem with referring it.
Okay. Well, if there's no hand raised, Matt, can we please do a roll call vote? Can you also tell the motion on the floor?
Yes, uh, the motion currently on the floor, now correct me if I'm wrong, is to adopt. Uh, because I don't believe there, an official motion has been made to refer. So the motion on the floor is to adopt.
Alder Lema, just before we go on the roll call, yes, Alder Lema, go ahead.
Yeah, I was wondering if I could make an alternate motion to refer it to that May meeting.
Okay, and there's a second. There's an alternate motion on the floor now. I believe we need a roll call vote on that, too. Go ahead, Matt. Please tell us the motion one more time.
The new motion on the floor is to refer um, the item to the May tenth, um, just for clarification, CCEC and council meetings, or just the May tenth council meeting?
It, it's going to come to both.
Both? All right, fantastic. Then that's the motion that's on the floor. All right, President Abbas?
No.
Uh, Alder Harrington McKinney?
No.
Alder Heck?
Hi.
Alder Lema?
Hi.
Alder Wehelier?
No.
All right, and Alder Carter is an alternate. Is she voting?
She will vote because Alder Penney is excused.
All right, Alder Carter.
No.
All right, uh, with four noes and two ayes, the motion uh, fails.
Okay, we will go back to original motion now. Can we please have a roll call vote? And please tell us the motion as well.
Absolutely. Uh, the original motion is to adopt. Uh, President Abbas?
Hi.
Uh, Alder Harrington McKinney?
Hi.
Alder Heck?
No.
Alder Lema?
No.
Alder Wehelier?
What's the motion again?
To adopt.
To adopt. Hi.
And Alder Carter?
Hi.
With four ayes and two noes, uh, the motion passes.
Oh, we, yes, we, can we have a motion to urgent at five thirty?
Some more?
And second by Alder Heck. Thank you very much. See you all at five thirty. Bye.